Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of Tuesday, May 15, 2018. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are here. Meeting agenda approval, is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none. Review of the projected agenda, any changes to that? Seeing none. Review of public engagement opportunities. Very wordy, public engagement opportunities. Let's see, May 18 is Bike to Work Day. Stop by the Cascade Bike Club F5 Celebration Station on the trail behind Chase House from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. for giveaways, raffle drawings, and refreshments. The city is exploring options regarding public safety needs and funding. Please take our survey by visiting our website. Is it on the banner? If they just go right on the website, it'll come up? Okay, good. Sound Transit will conduct an open house on the 145th SR 522 Bus Rapid Transit Project on Wednesday, May 30, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the North Shore Senior Center. City staff will be on hand for questions. There will be a second open house at Brookside Elementary in Lake Forest Park on May 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. No Bothell City staff will be there for the Brookside Elementary meeting. Discount programs for low-income seniors. Find out if you qualify for a 25% discount on your utilities. Join us at North Shore Senior Center on Tuesdays, June 5 and 12 from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And meet city staff, who will be available with applications and information. Get your pie and come on by. It's Pie Day. It's Pie Day, right? At the Senior Center that day? Okay. All right, enough on special presentations. So we have two proclamations and then we have a... Senator Palumbo, did you bring your representatives with you too? Just one big giant check? Okay. I will go down to the podium here and give these proclamations. And do we have Dale Vaticca? Come on up. With Division 2?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. They didn't put your name on here. You can't get up. Okay, so this is a proclamation for Safe Boating Week. Whereas recreational boating is a popular activity in the many rivers, lakes, and streams in and around Bothell. Whereas on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., the vast majority caused by human error or poor judgment. And whereas failing to follow the nautical rules of the road, using drugs or alcohol while controlling a boat and/or choosing not to wear a life vest, add risk. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today if they had worn a life jacket. Whereas today's life jackets are more comfortable and stylish and deserve a fresh look from today's public... Oh yeah, there we are. This looks good. Today's boating public. Whereas mission, the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Division 2 is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks. Now therefore, I, Andrew Rayum, the Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim May 20 through the 26, 2018, as National Safe Boating Week. Did you guys want to say a couple words or are you good?
Certainly.
All right.
My name is Klaus Naeos, and I just want to thank the city for recognizing the importance of boating safety and playing your part for so many years with hosting boating safety classes that the Auxiliary puts on at the Lidl House. The next one is June 23rd, starting at 8:00 a.m. That's a Saturday, so getting the word out is great. Thank you so much for your support.
And just like to mention, even though the weather outside is nice and warm, the Snohomish River is still really cold, so make sure you wear your life jacket if you go tubing over the weekend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the next is the City of Bothell Proclamation for the National Public Works Week. There she is, awesome. The Public Works Director. Okay, so National Public Works Week is May 21st through the 27th, 2018. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the well-being of our community. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, surface water, engineering, development services, public buildings, city equipment, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, the health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depends on these systems and programs. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of this infrastructure, as well as the planning, design, construction, and maintenance, is vitally dependent upon the effort and skill of Bothell's public works personnel. And whereas the success of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the public works department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Andrew Rayum, the Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim May 20 through the 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week. Did you want to say a couple words about public works?
I would love to, if I may. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you so much for doing this annual proclamation. In addition to thanking our public works team, as well as the rest of the city team that really help us do what we do, I'd like to take a moment to thank the public by reporting spills and potholes and participating in the development of our programs and our projects, as well as just reducing waste by putting food scraps in your yard waste cart. You are an engaged member of our community, and it's only with that engagement that we can do our jobs well. So I want to take this moment to just mention that the community truly is a vital part of the power that is public work. So thank you for this, and thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Next is the symbolic check presentation by Senator Guy Palumbo. And not the representatives, they're not here, right? Come on up. Or did you want to say a few words and then we can come down and have a picture with you?
Sure, I'd love to take a picture with you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Council, for having me in today. I'd just like to say congratulations on the purchase and, you know, the ongoing work and Councilmember McAuliffe and Councilmember McNeil for the work you did on One Bothell to really get this going originally. I know the capital budget delay from 2017 was very problematic for your budget in terms of the acquisition. I am happy to say that we not only got that done this year, but we also got the new 2018 capital budget done. And in those, you received the City of Bothell $2 million, both for the acquisition as well as the preservation of the aquatic lands in Wayne Golf Course. So I'm really excited about that project, and I know that from our time on the tourism issue that we had this week, it's probably going to be a centerpiece of our tourism strategy moving forward because it's a gem for the city. And I'm just happy that we're going to be able to preserve this land for generations to come. And I have a big symbolic check.
We love those checks. Do you guys want to all get down and have a picture with Senator Palumbo?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, let's do that real quick.
Congratulations, you guys. Yeah. Congratulations.
Okay, next on the agenda is the... Oh. Yeah, I was just gonna just move on. You can go talk to them if you already wanted a public questioning. All right, come on up. Let's hear it.
Sorry. You've done a wonderful job for the City of Bothell in helping us support our infrastructure. There's a couple of House bills that I've been searching, and I'll just give you the numbers, and then you can research it for me as well. So House Bill 1570 deals with homelessness in Snohomish County, and Bothell can engage in this. So I've done a little research, I know what it is, but I'm not going to take the time to talk about it. But I'd like you to reconnect with me if you would.
It was 1570, is that right, Councilman?
Yes. House Bill 2538 is another one that relieves impact fees for homeless shelters. And then there's another one, which is 2872, where police and mental health people work together. And I don't have a lot... I have the whole explanation, but I'm not going to go through it. But I would really like to have that opportunity to make sure that Bothell is aware of those and that we can move forward.
Absolutely, and if you're not... I would certainly look into those and get back to you. If you're not aware as well, one of the big wins we had on this issue this year, thanks to the entire Snohomish County delegation from both parties, is that we got $800,000 for the Snohomish County Divergence Center, which is up in Everett. So all of those embedded social workers that are out right now with our police force right now, if they find somebody who hits rock bottom and wants help or temporary housing, they don't have anywhere to put them. So Ty Trinary, our great sheriff in Snohomish, had this building with 44 beds ready to go. So we got the operational funds and it's up and running. It opened last week. So it's really going to change lives, 44 beds at a time, and it's really going to be a great thing for our county. So hopefully that'll help as well. That is certainly related to Bothell as well.
And also, we have a navigator program in Bothell, and so we really are looking for funding for that as well, so.
I think that's a great idea.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right, next is council committee reports. Does anybody have a report they'd like to give to council? City Manager, did you have any reports? Okay. Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, we had the Regional Services Committee report for the EMS levy. And in that, we passed four initiatives that we want them to look at. One is the vulnerable population. Other is the mental wellness of our first responders. And then we had another innovation that we talked about, and it's trying to capture all the data that we receive from the field and incorporate it with the data that's at the hospital. So the first responders can go out and treat a patient, take them to a hospital, and then find out if their treatment was good and the outcome of the patient. It's been really hard to get information from hospitals because of the HIPAA violations, so this is a way that we're going to do it over the electronic highway. And then there's another initiative that we asked for, and it was to take a look at the competency-based training of all of our EMTs. The program we have right now is over 20 years old and needs to be upgraded, so we're passing all that on to the Finance Committee this Thursday, and then it'll go to the actual task force at the end of the month, and then they'll come back and tell us if we need to make cuts. Because like any other levy, you know, people put in everything they want, and then people that run the finance say, "Well, you can't actually do that." So I'm sure that we're going to be cutting some of these or scaling them back down once we get the finance and the task force committee reports.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
I have a committee report on the Transportation Policy Board. We recommended projects this month to receive PSRC's Federal Highway Administration Funds. There was 27.5 million available from savings from projects removed from the list and higher federal allocations to be distributed to adopted contingency lists. And of those that got bumped up was North Creek Trail Phase 1, which is to receive 1.64 million. There was an update on State Facilities Action Plans. There's a formation of an I-5 system partnership, which will be discussing an action plan for Interstate 5, including preservation and near-term operation efficiencies, reviewing the HOV lanes policy, and then seismic preparedness and state facility bridges, and planning for local priority state route projects beyond those funded and connecting Washington. So that's a lot of local roads. Like for us, it would be 524, I think, and some of the other state routes that need expansion. And then we had a briefing on the Vision 2050 status update, so a summary of themes from scoping comments and initial results from public opinion surveys. For the first time, affordability tops the concerns expressed by those taking the survey. So previously, it's always been quality of life and transportation. This is the first time affordability became the highest priority. And there also brought up in the comments rather loudly was a need to address homelessness. And then one question that I asked in particular was, is growth tied to infrastructure or is infrastructure tied to growth when we plan for additional growth and density? And I think, I don't think it's clear to anybody, if we're chasing infrastructure, chasing growth, or growth chasing infrastructure. But I know when we had the... The mayor and I went up to Snohomish County, and County Executive Summers had a, I don't know what you'd call it, a round table where we just went through an exercise with maps and the... Well, we were given the assignment, each table of placing dots on a map in Snohomish County where we would put growth. They told us, I think there was 300,000 people coming, and we had to put dots for how much each city received. And overwhelmingly, people put it on the quarter where the new light rail will be going. And so I just had that question in terms of planning for 2050. The other report is East Side Transportation Partnership. We had a conversation with retiring legislative rep Judy Klippern, who is Chair of the House Transportation Committee. And I think her big, my biggest takeaway, and I'm sure Councilmember McNeil can weigh in, but what I heard loud and clear was, when we work together as cities, we get things done, and there's power when we band together as a region to ask for things. So that was her biggest piece of advice. And then the second piece was, we're looking into having a business representative join the East Side Transportation Partnership, and we'll be reaching out to several companies. The goal was to get a business with multiple transportation perspectives. And we talked about T-Mobile or Costco because they're a large business, but they also, in having franchises, operate somewhat like a small business, and they have the additional perspective of having reliability on freight. So that's something new, we're looking forward to adding to the East Side Transportation Partnership. And that's it.
All right, is there any other committee reports? Councilmember Zornz.
A couple things. I know a number of council members got to connect with Street Sense when they were in town last week for developing the brand of Bothell. So anybody else who wants to chime in on their impressions, please do. I came on Wednesday, all right, middle of the week, we had a big round table here, and people of all shapes and forms were here weighing in on what Bothell is. And I was very impressed with Street Sense. I love good research, and it looks like that they are being very thorough in identifying what is Bothell, not just doing it by the seat of their pants, but getting data to back it up. They want us to have a brand that's going to be organic, and let's see if I can have their quote here. Sorry about that. Anyway, they want a brand and a logo that's going to resonate with Bothell for a very, very long time. And we, and in three months, we'll get a chance to see what they put together. Then today, I went to the Urban Forest Symposium for Healthy Urban Forests down at University of Washington. Took pages and pages and pages of notes, and then I went home and I consolidated it down to just pages of notes. So I'll try to just pick and pull from that. There's a group that is mostly based in Seattle. They have, one is called K4C, and they seem to be very tightly knit with cities around the area in what they look for, tree health and forest health. But they also have another component that's a little more relaxed, and it's called A Million Trees. And they've been at it for two and a half years. They have 318,000 planted so far and want to have a million planted by 2020. There, it's a 50/50 split of conifer and deciduous. They, and if people want fruit trees, they will provide them fruit trees. They also have a, if you go to their website, you can, and you're King County, you can say, "I've planted a tree in my yard," and that will also count as part of the million trees. Replacement trees, for trees brought down, are not part of that count. They don't, they don't want that. And then Seattle Parks has a pretty robust, you know, they have the resources for that for environmental concerns. I think they said they have 61 groups that they support. But there's a program that they have going on that's called Lake to Bay, and it's connecting tree corridors between bodies of water, which I, and one right now that's going on close to us is Lake City. Let's see if I can skip. There's, we really have a plethora of some really good organizations. There is one group that we might want to take a look at, just kind of keep tabs on what they do. It's a group in Portland called Portland Intertwine Alliance. They have 164 partners of various cuts of cloth, community concerns, businesses, and they want to bring together common ground where they can advocate together and then showcase and provide resources to groups that want to invest themselves in parks or trails and even economic, even economic development where they're trying to be ecologically sound. So if you ever run across Intertwine Alliance, you're a super cup. And that's basically it, but that was a great thing to be a part of and sit in and listen on.
Awesome. Any others, committee reports? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. I just have a couple. So we, in PRSA, was supposed to meet this month, but we did not have a quorum. However, we did have a pretty robust conversation with Councilmember Lambert, King County Councilmember Lambert, Brooke, CEO of the Senior Center, discussions around improvements to the Senior Center, possible funding opportunities that may be available to us and maybe going out for some funding for that. So super excited. Some of the things that I learned through that conversation was, the Senior Center itself has a lot of veterans' services out of there and also human services that are offered out of that facility. So very excited about it, especially after the levy just passed in King County for seniors, veterans, and human services, that we might be able to see some additional funding for that. So I'll keep you updated as we move forward on that. We had a meeting with, our first meeting of the year, with King County Flood Control Advisory Committee. Pretty robust conversation around a lot of the projects throughout our region and a lot of the waterways. Interesting, as you go through the different projects, how cities, Tuck, Will, and Kent work together on a common project, to the deputy mayor's point. As you work together, projects can get pushed forward quicker when you do have partners that you're working with. So super excited to hear about that. We do have a project or two that we're looking at potentially getting some funding for, so I'm excited that Bothell has a seat at the table. We've been at that table for a few years now, and I think it's starting to pay off, so super excited about that. We had a seashore meeting, transportation meeting, this last week. We had a presentation that I forwarded on to council for community connections. In that presentation, they talked about the fact that they've got 25 cities now in King County collaborating on connectivity, and I believe the rest of the King County cities are coming forward. A couple of the projects that they discussed were the Kenmore to Kirkland Connections, the use of a community van, trip pool, and a school pool. School pool was a really cool project that I just learned about, how Arrowhead Elementary and Kenmore uses that to connect parents with each other on how to transport their kids to and from school. So super exciting program. They talked about Bothell in a very positive way with our van, what we're doing here with our community van, so I was excited to hear about that. The next presentation was the Division 2050. This is, this is the one that everybody's talking about now. We're hearing about it more and more. A million eight new people, 400,000 new jobs coming to our area, and we're just starting to work on it, but the main topic of this is affordable housing. The number that I keep hearing, the staggering number that I keep hearing for what we need in our region for affordable housing is 244,000 units currently. So it's mind-blowing to think that we need to get to that point in the things that are happening in Seattle. I don't know how we're going to get there, but we must continue our work. So anyway, that conversation's going to continue. We had, I attended the pre-pick meeting, which talked again about regional affordable housing. It's a task force. They're continuing their work at one table on that, so more information will come about out of that, local and federal dollars. I attended the ETP meeting with the deputy mayor. Again, I took out of that, working together regionally is an important factor. I also, Judy made a comment in that meeting, Judy Klippern made a comment in that meeting, that you take what's available to you now and grab on to what you can get, and then continue working and massaging what you need in the future. So I take from that that we need to make sure that we're sitting at the table on everything that we're doing, talking, collaborating. Otherwise, we get left behind. Let's see. I guess the last thing would be the pick meeting. There was a lot of conversation around voter fatigue. One of the positive things that came out of that meeting is a conversation around public safety. A lot of the cities talked about how their communities are very interested in making sure that their community has a level of public safety within them. I know that we're talking in talks right now about a public safety levy. There was a couple that didn't pass, and they felt, the people that I talked to felt like, the council members that I talked to felt like it was because they didn't have a proper outreach on their public safety. So I'm excited to see where we're going to go and make sure that we're all involved in doing what we need to do to make sure that people understand how we're trying to put this forward, making sure that we keep our community safe. So those are my reports.
All right, any other council committee reports? Okay. Moving on to the visitor comments. So each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council, without the permission of the mayor. And the first one I have is Dalts Pawar. Okay. Go ahead, go up to the podium there and give your name for the record and go for it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daljit Pawar, and I came here to discuss regarding that we got the permit last week. We are planning to open the banquet hall in Bothell area. And when we receive our invoice for the fire impact fee, when we fill the application in the February 1st, your front desk notify us that your fee should be in the category about like a art, recreation, or retail, because this is the banquet hall. It doesn't show anywhere on that type of development that there is a banquet hall listing, so they can charge that way. So they pick in the category of restaurant and lounge, which is not correct, because banquet hall is for the birthday parties and a family get-together. So I'd like to discuss with the mayor or everybody here, so what we can do, because they charged me $21,000. I never expect that kind of a payment in the beginning. So the front desk, when we fill the application, they told me very clearly, you're not in the restaurant or lounge, like that. So now they, we discussed with their fire marshal also yesterday, and still not, they came out, they told me, you're also right, you're nothing in the restaurant listing there. So I really need your help, because I'm from a single-family person here. I cannot, I have three kids, to feed them, and I cannot afford to pay this kind of fees to the City of Bothell.
So thank you for coming in. I was going to direct you to the city manager.
So, I like to discuss with mayor or everybody here, so what we can do, because they charged me $21,000. I never expect that kind of a payment in the beginning. So, the front desk, when we fill the application, they, they call me very clearly, "You're not in the restaurant or lounge," like that. So, now they, we discussed with their fire marshal also yesterday, and still not, they came out, they told me, "You're also right. You're nothing in the restaurant listing there." So, I really need your help, because I'm from a single-family person here. I cannot, I have three kids, to feed them, and I cannot afford to pay this kind of fees to the city of Bothell.
So, thank you for coming in. I was going to direct you to the city manager. So, we, we typically, when there's public comment, people provide public comment, and then the council, we obviously listen, and then staff typically are the ones that'll follow up with you.
One more question. When we fill the application in February 1st, they told us it'd take like a month and a half to get your permit. So, it's take like more than three months to get the permit last week, and it's very hard for us, from a single-family person, to start the rent for the new TI space. Is there, is very hard for us to, you know, if they told us in the beginnings, take like three months, we can do something different way, you know, or...
Okay, great. So, the city manager would be happy to, to get your information from you and follow up and, and respond.
Okay. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Yep. Thank you. Next is Andrea Packer.
My name is Andrea Packer. I'm one of the members of the Bothell Library Board, and I just came to share an interesting event that's happening with the Bothell Library. It was chosen to be one of 75 NASA at-the-library libraries, which means it's received information, materials, networking, computer, things like that, from NASA to be able to engage in some STEM-based programming efforts. So, again, it's just one of 75 across the nation, and they're coordinating with NASA, and it has great opportunities for networking. And I happen to know that another library, Anacortes, has had NASA members, specifically astronauts, come to the library and chat with teens who are interested in the STEM field. So, it's just an exciting thing that's happening at the library that I wanted to share. There is a meeting on the 23rd from 3 until 4:30 to discuss potential programming, and teenagers are invited to discuss what they would like to see happening with that program with NASA. So, that's all.
What was that date again?
The 23rd of May.
23rd of May? Got that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other sign-up sheets. Is there anybody that would like to provide public comment that didn't fill out a sheet? Going once, going twice? No? Okay. We are on to the consent agenda. No items have been polled. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by deputy mayor, seconded by councilmember McNeil. Any discussion on the motion? Seen none. You ready, clerk? Place your vote. Passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is, what happened? There we go. A public hearing. So, we have a public hearing, AB 18-076, public hearing to consider a planning commission recommendation regarding the 2018 miscellaneous and housekeeping code amendments, including code amendments in support of lean process improvements. Officially opening the public hearing, and Mr. Blackburn, you have the floor.
Evening, mayor, members of the public, and members of the council. This is, of course, a miscellaneous, housekeeping, and lean process code amendments. And the purpose tonight is to hold a public hearing on these recommended code amendments, and these are recommended by the planning commission. The council action requested tonight is adoption of the proposed amendments. Now, these are proposed amendments include a number of items, clarify development regulations, codify directors' interpretations, improve processing efficiencies, and remove some obsolete noticing requirements within the code. The planning commission held a study session on February 21st of this year and a public hearing on March 21st, and also has some findings, conclusions, and a recommendation, which is included with your packet. Now, I'm going to break these into kind of the general categories of housekeeping, miscellaneous, and lean process. And basically, the housekeeping amendment, these are the kind of things that you do when you find some error in the code, and you just want to clean the code up. And that includes a number of items. One is, of course, removing an obsolete reference to certificate of mailing process that was removed about two, three years ago. There was four provisions in the code, one of them just got left. One is, of course, correct a reference, the number of persons allowed within this household. We went from eight to six. We had a couple places where it still says eight. One of the things is to remove a reference to the OP or Office Professional Zoning classification within, within the Lower Maywood Special District. There is no OP zoning within that area. Correct the descriptions of subarea A and B within the North Creek Valley, basically the North Creek Northeast 195th Street subarea. Again, there was some confusion about what that is. Also, we want to insert the word schools within the SEPA exemption. That is basically what is within the Washington Administrative Code, but our code just happens to have that not included. So, that is a very logical thing to include as a housekeeping amendment. As far as miscellaneous code amendments, these are things that kind of implement directors' interpretations. And one of, of course, is we're putting in a director's interpretation on how to apply setbacks within our mobile manufactured home parks that have rental pads, don't have actually fee simple lots within them. Another one is, we want to clarify where single-family residential structures can obtain a 35-foot height. Basically, more single-family is 30 feet. There's a few locations within the city, within specific provisions, within new subdivisions, that they can go to a 35-foot height. The other one is, we're asking to exempt driveways within the handle portion of a panhandle lot from the hard surface coverage allotment. Now, I'm going to go through a couple of quick little photographs, just kind of illustrate these a little bit more detail. This, of course, mobile manufactured home setbacks. The concept there is to, when you don't have a specific lot line to measure from, the, what we've come up with as a director's interpretation is to measure that from the center line of the street, as well as to have certain dimensions between existing mobile home, manufactured homes, as far as the separation goes. That's basically what that code provision would do. The building height, and I'm going to do this a little bit carefully here, because it's somewhat confusing in some cases. Essentially, what you have, this is a new development subdivision, post 2007, and this is its perimeter of that new subdivision. The concept here, when those code amendments were done back in 2004, I believe it was, was to assure that the houses that are next to existing subdivisions were still at the 30-foot height. They didn't have to be, they weren't allowed to be taller. However, when you get away from those areas, the interior houses could be a little bit taller. Basically, the concept is that you're getting, you're protecting the adjacent residential areas from that additional height. One of the provisions we found, we've had some troubles administering this code, so we wanted to make sure that the code is a little clarified by saying it's the lot that has to be at least 50 feet from that round property line. And essentially, what that would do, from a sectional perspective, which is what this shows, is you can see where some of the heights are. We want to make sure that, that's really clear, that that first row of houses within the new subdivision is compliant with what's adjacent to it. Panhandle lots is a pretty simple one. Essentially, what we have, we have not a lot, but they do crop up quite a bit, these panhandle lots. And one of the things that we did is we implemented some hard surface allotments within each individual, single-family lots. What's happening is that by the time you get that, that driveway within that panhandle, you're taking up a lot of that allotment. And what's that is doing is it's affecting the size of the house that can be placed upon that. This illustration is a little bit more clear. Basically, you know, this typical is 9,600 lot, about 120-foot panhandle. We put a 12-foot wide driveway, you're taking up a lot of that allotment, and thus making a much smaller surface area for your availability of development within that. So, the concept would be that within this panhandle, to exempt the hard surface from those areas, just to give them a little bit more chance to have a more, a similar-sized house on those lots. Now, as far as the lean process code amendments goes, there's a couple of things that we're doing. One is regarding consistency and completeness reviews. What the development review staff have identified, there's a couple sections, in fact, one in fact, that basically identifies, it kind of mixes those two. We want to make sure it's very clear, we're talking about consistent review or completeness review. It's really important we do that. One of the others is not to require the installation of a notice board. Those are those four-by-four big white sheets. When we install wireless communication facilities, what you'll have is you'll have the posts and you'll have that notice board. We want to have our noticing be very effective to folks. And again, because of the FCC regulations, we're going to have that facility there anyway. Just having that notice board just adds some confusion to what we're doing around the community. Also, an important one is to allow up to a 10% increase in the structure area as an administrative decision for any conditional use permit that has already been approved. And that's important, because sometimes you have a facility like a religious institution. All they want to do is put a front foyer on their, on their building, so they can get people out of the rain quicker. Unfortunately, the way our code is structured now, they have to go through the full conditional use permit process. That process is really expensive, takes a lot of time, and, you know, for a really inexpensive development, you know, remodel, they're spending almost as much money on the process as they are there. So, the concept here would be to allow the administrative staff to allow, to approve a 10% increase in square footage. That should cover most of those kind of situations. One of the other things that we've got in the proposed amendments is to revise the references regarding comprehensive plan amendment process with rezones. And again, it's very important that we make sure we follow that precisely. Essentially, what we have underneath the state law, we have to have the comprehensive plan be the primary document. That means the comprehensive plan, a rezone, a rezone can amend the comprehensive plan. The only thing you can do with that is to have the comprehensive plan in place to do any kind of a rezone. And we want to make sure the provision under a site rezones under the zoning code was very clear, that you have to follow that comprehensive plan process. So, tonight, public hearing, council questions, discussion, and of course, the council action on this particular ordinance. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. I have nobody signed up on the sheet. Does anybody want to provide public comment during the public hearing for this item? No? Okay. Council questions? Any questions? There we go. Deputy mayor?
So, my first question is the 10% for conditional use expansion. Is it 10% within a certain number of years? I guess my only concern is 10% this year, 10% next year, and how does that relate to requirements or limits on the impermeable surface?
And that's a good question. Essentially, what it is, is it is a 10% increase of the approved conditional use. Basically, what happened is, the hearing examiner, after a public hearing, will, will approve the conditional use, and it'll identify how large the building or structure, or whatever it happens to be, can, can basically be allowed to be. And the concept would be, be a one-time, up to 10% for that area. You can't come back and keep doing the 10%, because it's based upon the approved conditional use.
That's great. Thank you. I'm always looking for ways to get around rules. I don't know what that says about me. So, I, I actually asked some questions via email, but I wanted to ask them, a couple of them, on camera, just for residents to, because they might have similar questions. Let's see. Oh. So, the Lower Maywood dimensional standard of 800 square foot interior heated space. My question was, this means that tiny houses would not be allowed, correct?
Interesting, because there's a little bit of a different application for single-family residences, which was what that provision talked to, and accessory dwelling units. And I'm, my presume, and I'm going to presume, because we don't have it exactly spelled out, but what the tiny house would be, an accessory dwelling, should, should be allowed underneath our current definitions within the regulations. However, I think what you have identified is something that's kind of important that we clarify in our regulations when we do our accessory dwelling unit code amendments later on this year. I think that's something that we really want to hammer down and get that nailed very precisely.
Well, because I can see the potential at some point, given the affordability crisis, of having a development that's just tiny houses, and in that case, it wouldn't be ADUs, they would be new standalone, correct?
Oh, I see. And of course, we're somewhat fortunate, because it would only apply within that very specific district. However, that is a good point, and I think that that is one of the things that we really do need to address. You know, later on this year, we're going to do a little bit more work on the ADU stuff, so that's basically on the radar right now.
Well, it's definitely a trend. There are TV shows all about tiny houses. My, my family fantasizes about having a tiny house. I think they're crazy. I guess that's it. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm excited to get all these little tiny things complete, and hopefully that will improve efficiency in the community development department.
Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. So, on number one, which is 11.10.01, and looking at how schools then would be listed in SEPA exemption activities, what does that, can you kind of give me a little brief on that?
You bet. Essentially, what the SEPA rules allow is they allow a certain size of improvement to be exempted from having to go through the SEPA, State Environmental Policy Act, process. And essentially, what we have is that, and the magic number is 4,000 square feet. If you're smaller than that, you don't have to have a SEPA review process included with that. What's interesting is that the Washington Administrative Code contains schools as one of those exempt activities. Our code does not. And whether that was an accidental omission, or what it happens to be, I'm not sure. But we really should be consistent with the Washington Administrative Code. It's makes it so much easier for us, particularly across jurisdictional review and processing.
Thank you. And then my second one would be on the mobile manufactured home park setbacks. I'm really concerned always about how we protect our mobile and manufacturing home parks. And I don't know how this actually, what this means. So, could you just give me a brief on that?
Well, and here's what happened. About four years ago, we had a couple of those mobile parks that basically wanted to replace some old units with some new ones. What occurred was that when we actually looked at the language in the code as it is now, we had to say, "You can't have it," because it allows no variation whatsoever. There was no measurement methodology to determine how far from the drive aisle it should be, or anything, a separation provision. And so, what happened is that the director had to issue an interpretation of the code that said, "Okay, we're going to follow these rules when we have these replacements of the old units with the new units." And essentially, what that did is it set up a methodology so that, the number one is, of course, to make sure we had the roadway that was clear for fire and emergency access and other type access, as well as, of course, the separation between units. Basically, there's a minimum standard that you have to apply, and that varies depending upon the style of construction. But that was basically what that was about.
So, this actually makes it easier for people to replace an old mobile home?
Well, it certainly makes it possible, yes, indeed.
Possible?
Yes.
Better than easy, right?
Yeah. It may not be easy, but it certainly makes it possible underneath our regulations.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. And I guess I'm just to follow up with our deputy mayor. Accessory dwellings or small homes on property is really important to me as well. We're going to have affordable housing. If our families are going to be able to have their children or grandparents live on the property, we have to have that ability to have accessory dwellings.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Zorn?
Is this a composite of questions and comments?
We were just going to do questions now, and then we can do discussion after that, or you can do, do whatever you'd like.
Can I just get it over with? Just get it off my chest?
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. So, went on the mobile homes. I want to clarify, this is for new homes, it's new mobile homes. These regulations are going to apply to new mobile homes, or are we going to go into mobile homes and clear out some of the existing?
No, 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 no. That's not, not in anybody's...
Okay, good. Where it might be a problem is if someone's in a mobile home park where it's, it needs to be tweaked, and they want to replace a mobile home, they might be out of spot if they're too close to a neighboring mobile home?
Boy. Well, here's, here's basically what this does. This sets up the possibility that you can have that replacement action. Right now, under the code, if you really were to lead it in a really stringent, you know, constructionist manner, oh, sorry, you moved that mobile home, it's gone.
It's gone.
So, we don't want to have that. We want to have the ability for, but we need to have the measurement of how far away from the other mobile homes, or how far from the drive aisle that a mobile home has, and that's where the code amendment as proposed would really be of benefit to.
Okay. You don't want eaves touching eaves?
Not if possible.
Okay. So, then I have, I'll just get the comments off my chest here. The public notice and removing the certification. Something that I, you know, heard this summer a lot is, people are like, "I need, I need to know when this happens." And I understand the logic for cleaning that all up. My question, my comment to just toss it out there, might the city, and I spoke with Jennifer about this, might the city consider on its webpage a place where people could sign up to be notified if it, if a new... to be notified if, if a new construction's coming, a new development's going to be happening near, like, say, single-family homes? Because people do not initiate, you know, think every week, I'm going to go look for, and, and all of a sudden, something could be happening next to them that they wouldn't know about. It's just an idea that.
Okay. That would be something that we'd have to take a really good look at, because the way development happens is that even staff doesn't know a development application's going to come in until we actually receive it.
Okay.
And having a pre-notification list is tough. One of the things I will identify is our webpage does do a pretty good job of listing new notice of applications, and that's the first stage. And there's a, there's a section that actually does that, as well as, of course, our, our Cobb map, basically our little mapping application process does that as well. But as you identified, if you're not staying on top of things, it's hard to keep that.
People don't go look. They're busy with life, and it'd be nice to keep building that trust with them, that we're watching out for them.
So Mayor, if I could just elaborate a little bit. So picking up on what Mr. Blackburn was just talking about, if we have an alert system, and I think we do on our websites, you can subscribe to those.
Right. That's what I was asking for.
And we have the webpage that Mr. Blackburn talked about. We could set that up as a, as a page where you could subscribe, and then you would get a notice whenever there was an application that was received by the city. That is probably the best that we could do in terms of, you know, giving people an opportunity to know what applications have come in.
They could just go, when a new notice goes up, then it would be on them to go look for it.
Right. They'd get an email that this webpage has been updated. So I know we've used that in other jurisdictions I've worked in. I'm assuming we have that capability, so we'll look into that and see if we can add that.
Yeah, that, that was the level of what I was thinking would be easy to do. But thank you. And then the other one is the comment on the panhandle, if wishes were fishes, is that if we could encourage those to be as narrow as possible?
Well, certainly, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, and, and let's face it, nobody wants to pay more for asphalt or concrete than they absolutely have to.
Well, you would hope.
So they do try and keep them narrow, but.
You would hope.
Even at a 10-foot width, which is fairly narrow to drive down, it's, really does, by the time you get back there, it takes up a lot of that allotment.
Yeah, right. It's just a lot of pavement that's happening. And then the other thing is, is I don't know, you know, it would be nice to encourage people to put semi-permeable surface down on, on the panhandle, just to kind of soften the impact of having more, more covered surface.
Yeah, and if you have the correct soils, that's a really good solution.
So that's, that's all, that's the sum total of what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember McNeil.
Yes, on the panhandle, do those have to meet a certain requirement for fire access?
I believe it is, I believe it is 10 feet wide for one single-family house. That was what I'm remembering off the top of my head.
Okay, so they'd have to be minimum 10 feet wide.
I believe that's the standard, yes. Now, one single-family house, the fire department is fairly lenient, because the risk is lower than it would be if there were four or five houses, certainly. And of course, that's requires an even wider roadway, driveway, if you would.
And we're, we're referring to new construction, correct?
New construction, absolutely, yes.
So in the new construction, would there be a fire sprinkler requirement?
Most of the time, there is. Not always, but most of the time, there is, yes.
So if you have a, so I know that it's based off square footage, if I remember correctly, the presentation we had previously.
Yes.
So if it's based off square footage, and you're small, you're under that square-footage threshold, you don't have to have a sprinkler.
I'm not a fire code expert.
I'm only asking, I'm only asking the question, because if we, if we allow, I don't know how many of these we would have, but if we allowed them, the panhandles, and they're long, longer, the fire access becomes much more difficult, the longer they are. And if we, if they're building something which we want them to be affordable, that's, that's the goal, right? But we also want to make sure that there's a safety factor as well. So if we're allowing them, they're narrow, there's not a lot of fire access, maybe we should also be in the future looking at, they have, they must be sprinkled or something.
Yeah, in fact, I think what you identified there is that, that is one of the evaluations that is taken under advisement when they do a building permit, when it's way back there, is the fire department does look at that and say, wait, we can't get there, we have to mandate fire sprinklers. And that does happen on a pretty regular basis.
Good. Okay. That's fabulous. The manufactured home setback, if, if we're removing a piece of that that allow, that will allow them to make, to, to improve, to put a new one there, hypothetically, just going to run a scenario by you. If I, if I have two homes now, and they're not meeting the setback requirements now, currently, and I want to replace it with a new one that's exactly the same size, and it's not going to meet the setback requirements, is that going to be okay?
That's not necessarily going to be okay. What would happen is they'd have to come up with a way to improve the fire stop between the buildings. There'd have to be some type of a, an improvement done to whatever type of structure they're replacing it with to meet a certain fire rating. When they do those things, they can be a little bit closer in those situations.
Okay. Well, I'm struggling with that one, just to touch.
Sure.
Because I'd hate to remove something that's going to thus have an effect on, it's on new, but I think what I'm hearing you say is this is going to allow them to do new, but it's not going to remove the restriction of the new.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Discussion, or we can do, go straight to a motion as well? Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance provided as attachment to approving the 2018 miscellaneous and housekeeping code amendments as recommended by the planning commission.
Second it.
All right, it's moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by Councilmember Zornz. I think that's your first second. Is that your first second, second?
My second second.
It's your second second. Two, let me get back to that. Adopt the proposed ordinance provided as attachment to approving the 2018 miscellaneous and housekeeping code amendments as recommended by the planning commission. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. All right, so we are on to new business, AB 18-077, the 2017-18 results of operations quarter for budget status report. And we have the finance director here to provide a fantastic presentation.
I just have to find it. Well, we had a $2.4 million deficit for 2017. Basically, I want to go over what that consists of to try to, try to give you some assurances about that this isn't going to be ongoing. The revenue shortfalls, I'm going to start with a quarterly report that is actually out online for citizens and stakeholders, and I'm just going to walk through that process, okay? For revenues, out of $1.1 million in revenue shortfalls, I can assure you that $800,000 of that has to do with audits by entities other than the city of Bothell, and that the city had no part in that. We collect revenues, it goes to DOR, or we receive it from utilities, and then later there's audits that happen, they can be years later, up to a decade. And we have to return those monies if it's found that they overpaid. So $800,000 of the million dollars was outside the city's control. $200,000 of that was for revenues that we will receive in the next year in '19 and '20, but we did not receive in, in 2018 as we expected. So of the $1.1 million shortfalls, there's only $140,000 that will actually be ongoing. When we look at the public safety expenditures, 100% of that $1.5 million is a one-time hit. 18 months of back pay for firefighters, and 12 months for police personnel. So that said, then we have to ask ourselves, what is the impact of the negotiations and the new contracts? We have looked very carefully, and staff by staff actually looked at the, the costs of those increases, and what we have found is that, looking at increases in revenues and looking at increases in expenditures, we actually anticipate that more than likely we're going to come up in 2018 with surplus revenues and 18 one-time development revenues that will cover that $2.4 million. Okay, so we'll continue to watch that very carefully and come back quarterly and tell you where we're at, and if we need to make any budgetary changes in 2018. That said, citywide, you can see that revenues have exceeded expenditures for 2017, and that is positive. And then as we go down, we see that construction revenue, development revenue continues to be strong, and is expected to continue to be over the next two years. Here's where we see the $2.4 million gap in revenues being lower than expenditures in 2017. That number excludes the $8 million that was transferred from the capital fund. The reason that we transfer the $8 million over the capital fund is because it's to be used for the lease on this building. And when we're audited, and when we have our credit rating report, any monies that aren't restricted to capital, we need to have in the general fund so that we can show a stronger general fund, fund balance, as to with our credit rating. As we get down into the budget versus actual figures, this is where we actually see the inflows, including the $8 million end of the year during the budget amendment that was transferred over to the general fund. Of course, those are dedicated towards this building again. The street fund, you see that we have additional monies. That's because of the safe streets and sidewalks monies that are coming in. We receive them twice a year through property tracks. And so basically, it takes a while for those projects to get up and underway and design work and all that kind of stuff. So those monies will be spent down as the projects are completed, and staff continues to work on those. The capital improvements fund, you see a big gap there, that's the $8 million moving over to the general fund. And proprietary funds, the money has come in stronger, and that has to do with monies that are set aside for future capital projects, underground pipe, that, just like an asset Here, basically, we have some items that the council over past years has asked us to track for them. Development review and permitting fees. Basically, when you look at the two of these, we, we work towards, our fee schedule's set up for 100% cost recovery. But because of the timing of, of development review and permitting and that, it never pans out to 100% cost cut recovery within a calendar year. So anyway, we track it just to, just to make sure that as, that our fee structure and our increased costs for staffing and that, we can look and see if we need to relook at those costs. And right now, we're $100,000. Between the two, when you net them together, we're up $100,000. And those monies have to be spent on that purpose, by the way. CFP staff, that has to do with capital costs within the general fund that engineers, people who work on capital projects, that we receive grant monies and stuff from the, the capital improvements fund gets transferred over to the general fund, and so those costs don't actually hit the general fund, even though they're general fund staff. Utility tax rebates, this is just the executive summary, by the way. When you go out online and you look at this report, you can actually drill down, and you can look at the specifics within the, the capital fund, you can look at sales tax, lots of information available online. It's set up for somebody who just wants to see real quick where we're at, and those who want to dig a little deeper. Citizens can also ask for reports to provide additional information online. Okay, so basically, CPIW, right now is at 4%. Actually anticipate it's going to go down, just from information I'm getting from economists right now. I'm, I'm guessing that by June, it'll be down in the 2% range, but we'll see. That's going to impact the cost of staffing in 2019, 2020, so that will be something we'll be looking at during our budget development process. Our unemployment rate, 3%, again, that has an impact on staffing costs as well. And here, when we look at personal income, personal income throughout the Great Recession and the aftermath of that stayed at the 5% range. So personal income has continued to grow and grow and grow in this area. And again, here's inflation is actually, even though CPIW is up, inflation's probably going to stay at the 2% range. Okay, so again, just very quickly to show how people can drill down, if you want to look at the street fund, you can actually go and you can look at the specifics, drill down more explanation, information for citizens or stakeholders to look at. I'm marketing our report here. So, anyway, that said, I'm available for any questions that you have, but I think overall, Moody's said it best when they told us that we have some fund balance issues, and we're going to need to look at replenishing those fund balances over the next two bienniums, probably. Any questions?
So how do we do that?
Well.
How would we replenish our fund balance?
Well, the biggest problem actually is public safety funding, and the fact that the level of service is being diluted along with, because the costs are going up at, at a higher pace than, than the revenues that are funding it. That is, somebody asked earlier about, does development pay for itself? For a short period of time, it does. This is my belief. For a short period of time, it does when you're getting the one-time revenues. But once you move forward into the ongoing revenues, you have the same inherent problem where you have a budget structural imbalance, because the revenues do not come in with property tax being capped and restrictive tax laws. We can't keep up with the cost of, of staffing, which is 85% of our budget. So the problem just gets bigger as you grow. The thing about development is that gap, if we're not planning smart and planning for development and that, the gaps can be bigger. So we're doing the best that we can, but the public safety levies, or levy, I 747, that's what voters asked. Come and ask us what level of service we want, and we will pay for that level of service.
So that's how we fix the imbalance?
We have to do one of two things. We have to lower our level of service or bring in more revenue. I mean, that's, that's it. And as far as property tax, it's probably the least regressive tax that the city has an option to use for this purpose, so the, going through a, a public vote is probably the right way to go about that. That probably it is.
The only way. Councilmember McAuliffe.
So I'm sorry, you referred to a initiative number? I'm sorry.
I 747, Tim Imman.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right. So do you have a slide that shows? So do you have a slide that shows the increase in demand for public safety over time?
I do not, but I believe there is a slide that shows the staffing and that it has stayed stagnant. But the cost, in our CAFER, we have a graph that basically shows call volumes have gone up significantly, both for police and fire and for the court. But what you will see is staffing for those departments has stayed flat over the last decade.
So I guess I'm just kind of thinking that if we're going to ask people to support a public safety levy, somehow we have to show them what this increase means. Because some people believe that now you're building new apartments, now you're having new developments, and they're paying more taxes. And that should make a difference. And so I'm looking to see what kind of, is there possible, is it possible to do a graph that shows the needs or the increase?
Yeah, there's definitely, if you take the staffing and you show that the staffing stays stagnant while the costs increase annually, you can make the case, when you look at, but you also have to, you have to include the development. But the development in the city, one of the reasons we're looking at Canyon Park is we've only redeveloped this downtown area. So you can't take one area and think that it is going to cover the cost citywide. Okay, so we just have to keep redeveloping. We have to plan. We know that by 50, 2050, you know, the population that is expected. And so the best thing that we can do is to go ahead and plan for the growth and determine how we pay for it, make good decisions and build a city that people want to come and be a part of. So that there's, that growth does pay for, you know, a certain percentage. But over time, you have the same inherent budget problem. The fact that your property tax goes up 1% or the city receives an additional 1% per year, which, you know, is like $120,000 a year. And that doesn't cover the increased wages that public safety employees receive and employees just in general, not just public safety, not just city employees. Personal income is going up at 5.5% this year in Bothell and King County and in Snohomish County. That's hard to keep up for any employer.
So you can tell me all this, Tammy, and I can hear it. If I'm going to go out to the public and say, we need a public safety levy because, I guess I need...
A picture, a graphic?
Yes, I need a picture, thank you.
You know what? I believe that the Assistant City Manager has worked on some graphs, but I will definitely stop in and see her tomorrow and we'll make sure we come up with something that you can use to actually present to people and some materials.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I'm sorry, I know it's a tough, it's a tough topic and it's hard to explain. There's so many different pieces.
But I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, any other questions from council? Councilmember McNeil?
That's right. I've got a bunch of people lined up.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Tammy. So the personal income percentage, I think it's 5.5 or 5.3. What goes into factoring that, personal income?
Personal income, basically, it's population and income within an entity or the city. It's King and Snohomish County. And overall, like if you were looking at sales tax, you would go to DUR and you would say, within this boundary, how much do people pay for sales tax? How much do you receive? In this case, personal income is what are people's employment costs, different entities, not just government, but actually every employer, you look at their, at their employee costs within their organization, and it all gets added up.
So the average citizen that lives in Bothell, their personal income...
Keep in mind that there's growth as well.
Okay.
Because you have so many employees. And if you bring more employees in, that's going to increase what personal income, if they move to Bothell, it's going to increase that. So as population goes up, that number's going to go up as well.
Okay, so that number is based on King County results?
King County and Snohomish County. And I don't come up with those myself. I just want you to know that I use a lot of data from economists, local economists. And what I do is I take the King County and Snohomish County numbers and divide them by the number of the population and that type of stuff. So we get kind of a range and use that.
Okay. And I'm asking these questions because in my mind, I'm trying to think, if I look at myself, where has my personal income growth come from? And is it the fact that my home has increased in value? Is it the fact that I've got a better-paying job? What is it that makes my personal income 5% higher than it was the previous year or two years? So that's kind of why I'm asking that question, because it also goes into, you talked about the development, you know, one-time paying for development, but over long-term, it doesn't. And you have a balancing act and you run into issues with the budget. So I'm listening very clearly to you that it sounds to me like we can build our way, just develop, plan for development, but we need to be planning for what comes after the development and how we're going to pay for those services. So if we increase 6,000 people in the city of Bothell, but we don't have the budget, the income, the revenue to pay for the police, the fire, to service those additional 6,000, that's where we run into the shortfall.
There's another part of that as well, and that's sales tax leakage. If you do not have the amenities for the people that come to your city and move in, then they're going and they're spending their money in Alderwood or in Woodinville, different places. So the more, that's why I'm saying smart growth definitely leaves, even though it's the same ultimate problem, isn't as big of a problem. So we need people to, when they live in Bothell, to spend money in Bothell, to have the amenities here to serve that population.
So it's almost, it sounds to me like you're saying that we need to have a diverse stream of income, meaning possibly not all housing, but also revenue-generating businesses that collecting sales tax, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Smart growth.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. I was struck by, you know, the bar graph that showed higher revenue than expenses and, because it doesn't really tell the story, but it looks like it got adjusted.
It did, and that was a really good catch, by the way. That's what happens when you have all accountants looking at something that do this every three months. Yeah, so anyway, I appreciate that. What we did was we showed it with, what the deputy mayor is talking about is basically for the general fund, we showed the $8 million operating transfer in. So it made it look like our revenues were very high, when in actuality, that was an operating transfer for monies that are designated elsewhere. So for our citizens, we went ahead and changed the bar. And then down below, for the people who are looking at our credit rating, who are preparing our credit rating, or for anybody interested in buying our bonds, then we left it the other direction. So we're showing it both ways and just put a notation, so good catch.
I'm very visual, so even though I read all the words, the picture was what grabbed me. So I don't know if this is a question for you or for the Assistant City Manager, but I received an email this week from a citizen in regards to the public safety levy. And they said they did not like the idea of a levy because it's just a temporary fix. And they wondered if it was possible to float a levy that's permanent. Putting aside the fact that it probably wouldn't pass, I just wondered if it was possible. They had called it a one-time levy and my response was, never say never.
Yeah, actually, that is a possibility. We could have done the same with the streets and sidewalks. But that would be like us staff coming to the council and asking you to approve us doing contracts from here until forever and you never getting a report that says, this is what you guys are doing. So by going out for six or nine years, there's a, like the safe streets and sidewalks, the Public Works Department is doing a great job of showing people what they're doing, coming before council, explaining how they're spending the money. Everything's very, very transparent. So when we talk about it, we have looked and really are more comfortable with the, not the permanent. Of course, permanent would be easier, but...
That's an interesting perspective. I appreciate that because, I mean, I just, I wanted to ask the question because it came up. Someone was very thoughtful about asking, they were actually quite distressed at the state of our police department and they were trying to find solutions that weren't temporary. But I think for accountability's sake, what you're saying is correct. It's better to go out every nine or 10 years and then you have the opportunity to reevaluate what your needs are.
Yeah, this is actually for six, and it does make it difficult for staffing and for the departments, but it's no different than an EM less levy that works very well for the fire department. But it just requires us to come back, explain to people what we're doing. And communities change and their, you know, their level of service they want to pay for may change as well. So this gives that opportunity every six years to come back and reevaluate what we're doing in this community and making sure that it's what citizens want.
The other thing I wanted to comment on was the reality check of the words, that development doesn't pay for itself. I see, I unfortunately read Facebook, and the city's constantly being accused of being money-grabbing thieves and inviting developers in because we want money. And I think it's a hard thing for people to understand because why would you do it if it's not for the money?
Well, if I-747 had not been passed, its tax-limiting legislation basically says that property tax can only go up 1% annually without a vote of the people. So, you know, in that case, you would have, your stabilizing revenue would be property tax, which used to be 6%. So if we didn't have enough money, we would just increase it to 6% this year. That would be more the grabbing, you know? I mean, this way, we're being very transparent. We're doing exactly what the legislation that voters voted for and told us they wanted. If we have a need, we're supposed to go to the voters and ask them what level of service that they're interested in and how would you like to pay for it? One reason that, we'll get into this in the next presentation, but one thing about property tax is that it is tax-deductible, you know? If you prepare a 1040A or whatever, there's, it's the least regressive of any tax that the city has. So there's thought going into, how does it go about? It's not just business paying, it's everybody paying. Everybody pays their fair share based on the assessed value of their property. So I guess bringing it forward, it seemed like the best alternative. But this will continue. It's just like the school districts. The school districts come back every year for their M&amp;O levy. It's city government with I-747, establish the same for us. We have to come back, whether it's parks, whether it's police, whether it's streets. This is how it works now.
Well, and I think the important thing for people to understand is, when people cry out for affordability, that means more houses, because there's a huge element of it is supply and demand. And we don't get to close our doors and say, we don't want you in Bothell. Doesn't work that way, so thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you. I also was taken aback by that $8 million. I'm going, geez, it looked good yesterday. So thank you for that explanation.
I'm sorry for scaring you.
It's okay. I am a little concerned. We've got a public safety levy coming up. Hopefully, it'll be passed by the citizens. It's just a temporary fix. It's putting a finger in the leak of the dyke because that's going to have to come up and be done again either six, nine, or 10 years down the future. What are we looking at to try to increase our income and still have the police, the fire, the courts whole? I know that the fire department, their call volume's gone up 25% in the last few years, and yet their staffing levels are the same. So they're kind of getting torn apart. And I think police and courts are the same way.
I think continuing to do smart growth, looking at Canyon Park and those areas, trying to shore up the sales tax leakage, so we're receiving more, people are buying things in Bothell in their own city. So again, I think it just keeps coming back to smart growth and talking to our citizens and taxpayers and making sure that they understand what we're asking them and finding out what they want and that they understand the need and, you know, whether it's visual through graphs or us going out and talking, those decisions are going to continue to go back, go back to the voters. That's what they asked us to do. We no longer have that stabilizing revenue source, that property tax, that we can lift up when we need to. It will become more prominent when, not if, when we hit the next recession. So the more that we can do now to get ourselves into a place where we have our reserves that we need to carry us through the next recession so that we can keep our levels of service where citizens have told us they want them to be.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Ready for the next one? Okay, you're not going anywhere, right?
No.
AB 18-078, overview of general-purpose municipal revenue sources.
This one will actually go a lot quicker, and we already talked about some of it. Basically, during the budget retreat, which I apologize for not being at, you'd think the Finance Director would be there, but I was actually very sick. So I, the city manager let me know that council really wanted to go over what revenue sources are available and make sure that when we do ask citizens to increase revenues, that we're using the right revenue source, the right revenue streams. So basically, there are not a lot of revenue streams available to municipal governments. There's a B&amp;O tax, property tax, sales tax, and utility taxes. Those are the main four that the legislature has provided for cities to utilize. Property tax is limited to 1%. Again, 1% is like $120,000, I think. That doesn't cover the increase for 350 employees, just with their step increases and their negotiated contracts. Property tax, again, is the least regressive. It's paid for both by residential and commercial residents. Retail sales tax, we have a 10% sales tax, which to anybody outside of Washington seems extremely high. But the city only receives less than 1% of that. And the county receives even less. So anyway, any sales tax leakage that the city is experiencing, this is a way to bring in more revenues. Again, I can't say that strong enough, smart growth. Sales tax is paid by anyone who makes a purchase or receives something from Amazon within the Bothell city limits, okay? Except with a car. With a car, it's where you purchased it, not where it gets delivered. In addition to regular retail sales tax, we also have some optional retail sales tax opportunities. Counties can levy an additional 1% or 0.1% sales tax that's shared with cities. It's a 1090 split. This was enacted in the counties that we reside in. In the 1990s, we receive these monies and they have to be restricted to crim... In the 1990s, we receive these monies, and they have to be restricted to criminal justice purposes. In addition, counties and cities can form a PDF, which is a public facilities district sometime. There's three different types of PDFs that are available. The actual PDF can tax, has the authority to tax. Some of them do not. Some of them require the city basically to back and ask for the monies. But a public facilities district can ask voters to approve a sales tax up to 0.2%. It has to be used, of course, for the district's purposes. You see those mostly for community centers, that type of thing. Counties can also ask voters to approve a sales tax up to 0.3%. It's shared 60/40 with cities, and a third has to be used for criminal justice purposes. And I believe Snohomish County actually tried to do this about a year ago and came very, very close. There's a B&amp;O tax. We have, in King and Snohomish County, we have, I believe, 15 different cities that have enacted a B&amp;O tax. It's limited to 0.2% of gross business receipts. It could generate up to $3 million annually in Bothell in 2019. The one thing about a B&amp;O tax to just keep in mind is that it is based on gross business receipts and not actual revenues, you know, after you've paid all your cost of goods and that type of thing. So, if your manufacturing and the cost of whatever it is that you sell is very high and the revenue is low, after you pay for your cost of goods, a B&amp;O tax doesn't go over well. You also have business license fees. The city of Bothell does have a business license fee. It's based on a range of number of employees, type of business, and square footage of the business. Of course, these are, businesses pay these taxes and fees, and so residents do not, okay? Except maybe through a cost of goods. We also have a head tax, which is popular in Seattle right now, and basically is just a set cost per number of FTE. And in Washington State and in King and Snohomish County, they range between $5 to $100 per FTE. In Bothell, that would bring in about $1 million, or $3 million, excuse me. We have utility taxes. They are basically a B&amp;O tax as well, but it's based on a percentage of gross operating revenues from utilities. Bothell levies 6% across the board, except for water, which is 11.15%. Water, sewer, storm, and surface water and cable do not have a statutory limit, but the others do, and anything over 6% requires voter approval. In addition, municipalities have the authority to levy other revenues, but all of these revenues that are listed below, lodging tax, gambling tax, local option motor vehicle, animal licenses, they all have to be used for the purpose that they're collected. So, they're not available for just general-purpose municipal government needs. And that's it. Those were our choices.
Thank you. Is there questions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation. It's nice to at least get a sense of why we have arrived, where we've arrived. I did, for the sake of discussion, want to ask about the B&amp;O tax. I asked through email about which of our neighboring cities in King County and Snohomish County have the B&amp;O tax. And the other question I wanted to ask was, why is B&amp;O gross business receipts and not net? Is it by law?
Yes. That is, it's tax law, that's how it's written up, and that's why it's kind of, it's met with your business community. It's a tough one to enact for that purpose, you know? It is not overly fair to somebody maybe who has a large, you know, they sell a product that has a high cost of goods, because it's gross revenues, you know?
So, I guess I can read the answer regarding the cities that have the B&amp;O tax. Bainbridge Island, Bellevue, Burien, Darrington, Des Moines, Everett, Issaquah, Kenmore, Kent, Lake Forest Park, Mercer Island, North Bend, Renton, Seattle, and Snoqualmie. So, not terribly popular.
It serves a purpose, but what happens is, you see them in communities that don't have a lot of business or communities that have enough business that it's not going to turn a business away. In Bothell, what we have as far as our business community and in the business parks is, we see people move, we saw a number of businesses move from Bothell, even Bellevue and Kirkland to Seattle after the recession. And then what happens is, you know, the cost, the rent, the buildings get expensive when there's a recession, and then they move back out into the suburbs more. So, it's kind of just this cycle, but, again, you know, it's there, it's something that could raise a lot of revenue, but it would be, it could be decisive.
The other thing that I wanted to mention that hasn't come up, and maybe I should have brought it up at the last slide, but we never celebrate when we finish a bond.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to mention that the police department was paid for in December.
Yeah, and the court, yeah.
And so, that was 10 cents per thousand AV?
It was at the end, because what happens is, you have, it was a 20-year bond, and it starts out at, I can't remember, it was, I think we, the city actually, it was before my time, but the city actually borrowed about $10 million. But there was, the population was much less, and the AV was much less. So, it actually cost taxpayers per thousand much more than it did at the end, when we had all this new construction and everything. So, it got, it ended up being 10 cents, but I remember when it was much higher.
Oh, I see.
And so, that's what happens when you bond today, and it'll affect taxpayers, but it'll never affect them more than today. It will continue to be diluted as new construction comes in.
Okay, fascinating. So, if we were to go for a 50 cent per thousand AV, that's the highest it would ever be?
To put it in perspective, the streets and sidewalks is down to 46 cents already.
And it started at 50 cents?
Yes.
So, that's only, what, a year?
Yeah.
Wow.
That is because our AV increased in double digits. So, every time that happens, it just continues to dilute the cost, yeah.
Well, I feel better about paying that now.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
So, we hear quite a bit about head taxes because of Seattle and the issues that they're, you know, Amazon's basically ready to maybe leave, and so, and we have no head tax here now, is that correct?
No, we do not.
Okay. And then a head tax is, that's not, it's give me general fund use if we want to get one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. It can be combined with your regulatory business license fee, and we could actually include it in our business license. It's a tax, it's not a fee, though, but we could combine the two and say that, you know, right now, we have cities that charge $5 a head or an employee, up to $100, which I think is Kirkland and Bellevue or Renton. One of the three is the highest, I think Kirkland.
$100 per person you have employed per year? Okay. And that's Seattle's current?
You know what? I can't remember off the top of my head what Seattle's is, but it's close. I think Kirkland was the highest with, a year ago, it was $100.
Because they're, I mean, so Seattle's doing it for homeless shelters or something like that, right? And it's going to be in addition to whatever they're charging now, just to dedicate those funds to that purpose, is that correct?
Yes. It's a very, it's a very large one.
Yeah, we're putting up signs to say, come out to Bothell instead of Seattle, so, we're not going to do a head tax, I don't think, at least I'm not in support of a head tax.
Yeah. We just need to get to Canyon Park and start master-planning that, so that we have the amenities for people to actually make their purchases here in Bothell.
That'd be nice. Driving to Woodinville's kind of a pain. Is there any other comments, questions? Councilmember McColl?
And I guess, you know, given that we are not collecting a B&amp;O tax and given that we are not collecting a head tax, and we're talking about $6 million annually, I think that should certainly be a part of the discussion as we go forward to levy. So, I'll just put in that note.
Councilmember Zorn?
Okay, so, I'm going to preface it this by saying I'm not advocating for it, it's just a curiosity point that I have about B&amp;O taxes. Could a city, in theory, if they were to have a B&amp;O tax, to protect new businesses that were coming in, exempt them from a B&amp;O tax, say, the first three to five years that they're in a community?
You know, we could check in with the city attorney, but I really doubt it, because we have to treat everybody fairly, so I don't know the answer to that.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
The B&amp;O tax, could they exempt current businesses for the first few years?
New businesses coming in who are getting their feet under them.
Oh, I see. Okay. Can we get back to you?
Yeah, it's just a curiosity point. I don't want anybody to panic that I'm advocating for it. I just was curious about that.
Yeah. Also, I want to be clear, too, with the B&amp;O tax, the head tax, anything, I'm not advocating for one or the other. I really believe that business also needs to pay for the roads and different things as well, so we just need to know who is impacted by these taxes. I just want to be very clear to you that some are more decisive, you know, people get more upset about certain ones, and be clear to you before we start having those conversations, so you know what the concerns are.
I agree. I was in a school here that's here in Bothell last week, and a couple staffers at that school who live in Bothell quartered me and said, it's not enough that new development just pays for that little piece, they're tearing up my road. So, you're not the only one who's feeling and noticing that.
All right. I think we're done peppering you with questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is a executive session for potential litigation matters pursuant to RCW 4230 1101I. And how much time do we need in exec?
Probably about 45 minutes.
Wow, okay. Do we plan to come back and, back to the dais? Okay. So, the city council will be in executive session for till, let's say, 8:30, and then we will adjourn from there, and we're not coming back to the dais.